Please, Councilman Klusman, would you like to give the invitation, please?
Heavenly Father, we come before you now, Lord. Please bless this council meeting, Lord, and help us have full heads, Lord, and help us do actions that would be pleasing to you, Lord. I pray for the first responders and our military, Lord. Please give them protection. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, let's see. Mr. Webster, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end and justice for all.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Praise and recognition. I've got a couple things to say. Number one, a gentleman that was on the parks board and volunteered many years at Santa Claus up at the festival lights, Jared Conley passed away, and, you know, I just ask that we put his family and friends in our prayers for comfort and strength to get through this time. I don't know how many years he worked up there, but he did a lot.
He was up there for probably over twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, Gary was very, yeah. Secondly, I want to give kudos and congratulations to the Fall Y'all Committee for the Dog Bowl yesterday. I had a birthday early on for one of my granddaughters, so I didn't get over until towards the end of the first session, but it was packed. Both of them were. They sold out, and it was a great thing. You want to add anything, Dave?
Just thanks to sponsors committees and volunteers, everybody. Like you said, we have forty-four lanes, and thanks to Tim at Town and Country.
Timmy Allen, yes.
They are awesome. They treat us really well. They, we have forty-four lanes allotted, but we had an issue where we had forty-five sign up. So we, he accommodated as always and went with it. So, and again, our sponsors, I can't name all of them, but get online and look at Fall Y'all Festival and check out our sponsors because they make it possible for it. And then, and thanks to all the bowlers who come out, it's a great time. If you don't do it, ask Chief Gilbert, ask anybody that's there, some of the council, Councilman Page, a lot of people. It's, it's fun. I mean, it's a fundraiser, but big time fun. So come join us.
Oh, by the way, if you go to Scott James Page, not the mayor Scott James Page, you'll see the form of Jared Page Bowler yesterday over at the Dog Bowl.
Athletic, NBA.
Nothing but pure athleticism. There's no doubt, Herman. Nothing but pure athleticism.
Do you want to grant?
No, he didn't fall. I give him credit. One other thing I want to say is tomorrow night at St. Albans High School, the St. Albans High School girls basketball team is playing in the regional championship. If they win, which they should, but there's no guarantees, they're going to the state tournament. So if anybody's free and wants to come out, come on out.
The boys play Friday night?
Boys play Friday night, yes.
Regional.
Against Oak Hill.
Quarterfinal. They gotta win that.
What time does the boys hit?
Seven, probably most, I think it's seven.
At the high school?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the girls are at seven, I believe, so. Any other praise and recognition? Yes, sir.
I'd like to recognize the fire department. As you guys know, flooding, and it flooded the bottom of roadside, our boat ramp and everything. It's a monumental task. I don't know how many hours it's got spent down there, but it was greatly appreciated because we don't have the proper.
Five forty-eight cases of water.
I had to load them all in my bikes.
My bike. I'm like, oh Herman, my bike. I'm getting old.
And thanks to the Krogers, the, the boys over at Krogers, Dave Donegan and Craig Coleman, I think might have been their names. They loaded most of it in, so they were a huge help.
Craig Coleman.
Craig Coleman, and they were awesome.
It's all about community, man. So any other praise and recognition? All right, approval minutes from City Council, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Seven.
Questions, discussion, or changes? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. All business, discuss usage of former S A J H S property. Councilman Eads.
Hi, at this time, Mayor, I'd like to yield the floor to Councilman Rucker.
I think, is Andy gonna have to pull it off the table for? You, you have to pull your table motion from the table for discussion.
Okay, I'll pull it off the table. Make a motion to pull it off the table.
And boy.
I see. So Councilman Eads and I were talking.
All in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. All right, go ahead.
Councilman Eads and I were talking, and in his motion from last week, the confusion, so the, the motion was to just basically seed and make a green space on the property. In discussion, it was, the concern was brought up about kids playing in balls and frisbees and whatever they're on, on travel road. So we were talking in, in, over, of the time since the last meeting about continuing with that and adding to have a fence erected now.
On canal terrace.
On canal terrace, just the terrace side. The train area side wouldn't need over there the fence. And then, I think it's Ellie, Lee Street, I think it is.
Lee Street's up the hill.
It's up the hill, so you wouldn't necessarily need fencing on that end. So it was to add the fencing. His whole point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman, was, was to get the ball rolling on, on the property, to not sit as, as just a vacant ugly eyesore, especially coming into the spring and the summer seasons. So to have it presentable, and we were discussing, we'd like to add to the motor, to amend the motion. I think he'll have to amend the motion, I believe, to seek a feasible, to have Chapman do a feasibility, feasibility study, not render drawings, not bring back designs, but what is possible? We, we, we talk about, we're speculating a lot. Is there a building at all possible? Because some say you can't put anything. Some say you can put a parking lot. Some say you can put this type of building. Let's have Chapman tell us what's feasible and what is a cost for a handful, three, four, five possibilities, whether it be indoor recreation facility, an outdoor recreation facility, housing, whatever the three, four, or five possibilities. Have Chapman tell us what's possible and move forward from this point rather than just sit here. So that's what our discussions were, and, and I think that we really need to act on doing something at this location, whatever it might be.
So Councilman Eads, do you want to amend your original motion to put a study out there that gives us options, what we can and cannot do there? Yes, yes, okay. All right. If we, would do it?
I, I just got a quick question.
Yeah.
So going back to what his original motion was in the other minute.
The green space.
And they were tagging on the Chapman thing?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And the fence.
And the fence.
All right, do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
All right, questions or discussion, Councilman Knott?
I have a question. My question is, if we wanted to pay to do a feasibility study with Chapman, I don't think we should do anything else. Spend money for a fence, throw more grass out or what have you. Wait after the feasibility, bring it back to the council.
Agreed.
And let's go through and see, okay, they come up with five things and let us vote for it from there.
Even if we plant grass, we might have to do some kind of site prep, so there's all kinds of dips and rocks and stuff like that in there.
Yeah, no, you're right. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ken.
Go ahead.
Oh, Councilman.
I'm, I'm on board with that as long as we have a, a time period that we're, you know, that we're looking.
We could probably get that done within, I mean, you know, we're every other Monday.
Right.
I mean, first and third Monday, so I, I would think two months. I mean, what do y'all think on that timeframe? I don't know.
Who's gonna, who's gonna till the ground and are they gonna bring in topsoil? We're not gonna do that.
Well, yeah, in, in discussion, we're talking, and I'm in, I'm in favor of saving the money. Don't spend any money and, and figure out long term instead of any Band-Aid at all. As long as we can do that without going into the late into the spring and into the summertime, all, all on board for that. I think we just want.
Is that something they can get to us at the first meeting in April?
Yeah, they'll get, no, 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 it would be the first meeting in May. They can give us March and April to do the study then.
Why does that take two months?
Well, it, it's not so much two months as it is the fact that we only meet on the first and third Monday of each month.
And what is the Chapman schedule?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll do, they'll do a feasibility study. I will check with them tomorrow to make sure they can get it done in two months. And then the first meeting in May, we should be able to have some type of answer from them.
Progress.
Councilman Page, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask a more of a question to Councilman Eads and Councilman Rucker. On this study, somebody had said, I forget who it was, it's like four or five different options, and we picked from there. Is this study, what you're envisioning, basically just what is possible? Not just, I don't want to limit ourselves to four or five different options and say either, you know, A, B, C, D, and then we get back and, well, we have another idea and we've limited ourselves to that. So would your, well, Councilman Eads, your motion specifically for this study, would, would it just be all encompassing that it could just what's possible? Is that how you're, is that your envision for the motion?
Yeah, and it's, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay. I just don't want.
And I'll say, I think Councilman Eads, and I, I think he's trying to be the nice guy here on this actually. I, I think.
He is a nice guy.
He is. I think he would much prefer the, the, speak, say no, you're wrong. He would much prefer the grass now. He wants immediate action right now. So I think he's biting his tongue on not immediate action.
But why would we plant grass on something, put a fence up? And I don't think leg, you know, legally you can put a fence on on the street side. If you got youth playing there and it goes around, you're probably gonna be held, maybe, I don't know. But why spend money on a fence that we made six months down the road, have another idea for it, and then tear that right back down? I don't understand the, I mean, that's just my thought on that. I don't know why I spend money on something.
Well, then I have, I have a question for Mr. Penny. How hard is that lot on your mowers?
The lot is very difficult on our mowers. We actually do not, we still have one of our old riding lawn, our zero turns that we use on there. We won't put our new ones on there. It's very rocky. There's still some brick there. So we don't want to tear up one of our fourteen thousand dollar mowers. So, and, you know, because of the ground, we do a lot of weeding there where we could be cutting it if it was a smoothie.
That, that, that's a concern I have is, you know, and, and again, the study will let us know. But the bottom line is, what's this going to end up in telling? Are we gonna have to clean the property up? We gonna have to till the property? We gonna have to plant seed? You know, things like that have to be considered, all right? Because we're in a situation budget-wise that we're not in terrible shape. But if we continue to spend in the manner that we have spent the last few years, it could get pretty ugly. All right, but again, feasibility study, and then we can get prices on whatever options we, council chooses to go. And we'll look at it and go from there.
So will that tell us what structures and where they can and where they can't be?
I think that's what we need.
Because we don't know exactly where we can put structures right now.
Well, the, the, the biggest problem with the structures is the storm drain that runs through there, all right? And we'd have to give an estimated cost of moving the storm drain if council would vote to build housing there. I've been in contact with a couple people, but, but anyway, the motion is to move forward with the feasibility study on the options and what could we do with that problem? That's what the motion is.
Well, wait, he has not rescinded his motion yet.
I think the easiest thing we think to do.
Who rescinds the green, green space portion and take it to Chapman for feasibility study?
Very good.
Seven.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. All right. Discuss Public Works Department revisions to trash collection and street maintenance schedule to help reduce cost of overtime. Trash pickup Monday through Thursday, work ten hour shift. Street maintenance Tuesday through Friday, work ten hour shift. Move large item pickup to Wednesday. Now, I'm, I'm gonna start this conversation off, all right? One of the greatest things that I hear on a consistent basis from St. Albans is that extra pickup on Friday, all right? Now, that is one thing that me personally, I don't think we need to move. Now, the ten hour shifts, if it's gonna save us money in overtime, I understand where John Boy's coming from in the committee. All right, I could maybe live with that, but guess who they're gonna come to, the next department, and say, we want ten hour shifts. We want ten hour shifts. We want ten hour shifts. And guess who it's gonna be? It's gonna come on me, all right? And so, you know, I, I, I can live with it if we've got a study on, or show where we're gonna save money, and I understand where you're coming from, John Boy, on that, because I know there's overtime involved in all the pickups and everything you all do. I understand that. Ten hour shifts would probably eliminate overtime, all right? But buddy, they're gonna come at me hard and heavy. I've already been asked by several people and individuals about, can I go do a ten hour shift? And it's gonna open the door. That's the only problem that I have. But with that, Councilman Rucker?
My only thing, I understand where you're coming from with regard to the public works and ten hour shifts. The only thing I would point out is, if, if Public Works does to this four tens, they will still, they will still be open Monday through Friday, eight to four.
Yes.
There'll still be someone at the garage. There will still be someone responding to people's concerns. If another agency, another group wants to do something like that, you could consider it as long as they're providing coverage over the times that they're supposed to be.
Right. The only problem is what, what worries me, all right, the only problem on that. And again, this is from an administrative standpoint, all right? I understand. If, what would be really good is show us how you could save us money with ten hour shifts. How much money are we gonna save, all right? But the only thing that worries me, we cannot run a city four days a week.
No.
No, we cannot do that.
But we don't intend doing that with Public Works.
Right. No, I agree. I agree with that. Public Works, they will still work five days a week. And, and again, if we can show where we're saving money and how much money we're gonna save by doing this, I have no problem with it. But I do have a problem with eliminating, changing the schedule on the Friday extra day pickup, because guys, I'm telling you, I, I, and, and other councilmen that have listened to other people, uh, citizens, that Friday pickup is something that stands us out amongst other communities. It really does. And I know you want to do it on Wednesday, John Boy, and, and committed, but let's keep it on Friday. That's all I ask. Keep, keep the schedule the same, all right? And if council votes to go ten hour shifts, that's fine. But man, we cannot, if you go to changing schedules, well, you know how hard it is, Tony and John Boy, when we have a day off? I mean, it, it, it's an aggravation, because unfortunately, and I'm not saying the majority or whatever, but a lot of citizens are like, I get messages all the time, when's trash pickup this week? You know, so if we keep the schedule the same, and if you all choose to elect to go to ten hour shifts, I, I can live with the ten hour shifts if you can show me where we're saving money. Yes.
From, from a messaging and a communication standpoint, the schedule that's there now makes much more sense, and it's easier for residents to grasp and understand if there's a holiday, because it's, it's, it falls in sequential order if there's an offset.
And they still don't all.
And they still don't get it.
Yeah.
They, they never will.
But a lot of my concept is this, is, you know, like you said before and earlier, you know, the city could be facing financial burdens later, maybe, maybe not, I'm sure. But Friday pickup is one of our biggest days and it's costing us more.
Well, it, because you're picking up for the whole town. I understand that, all right?
It's turned into a trash day, not an extra pickup day.
Well, and, well, extra pickup, and, and again, that's what differentiates a lot of people in our Public Works and our trash pickup from other communities, because we do have that extra pickup. That is the one thing, I can live with the ten hour shifts. If you can show me where you're gonna save money, I don't have a problem with that.
But that extra pickup, I would assume, is not intended for a household garbage on Friday.
Originally, it probably wasn't being.
But it is understood that way by the.
The citizens.
Well, there's not every, it was, every citizen would be putting garbage out on Friday. Forty percent, thirty percent of the people are putting the garbage out, which is causing the problem.
Yeah, and you know.
And if, and, and if you go to waste management, they can only allow whatever's in the trash can.
Oh, yeah.
And Nitro does the same, Nitro does the same thing, don't they, John? What, on the trash?
I'm not sure about the way it's going over there.
Let me tell you.
They're a mess over there.
For what our citizens pay at three hundred dollars a year for police, fire, streets, trash pickup, Hansford Center, parks and rec, all right? Three hundred dollars a year is, when was the last time it was raised?
It was oh four, oh seven.
Oh four, oh seven, all right? And we've done a great job of, of not trying to raise fees on our citizens. But there's a certain time point you have to look at that.
Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna have to face.
Yeah, yes, Councilman Rucker.
So on the schedule that's proposed, what, what does happen on a holiday week? How does, how does that change the schedule?
That's, that's the one I'm trying to figure out, so kinking that. So we either would have to pay, pay the employee that holiday or do the day behind.
Well, right now, Dave, as you know, if we're off on a Monday.
Right.
Martin Luther King Day or whatever, all right? Then everything is shifted one day back, and there's no extra pickup.
So that's what I mean on, on now with, with this, with this idea.
Yeah.
What would be the plan?
Well.
Is there a plan there for that?
Yeah, it's gonna have to follow the day behind.
Yeah, it would follow the day behind. Anytime you have a day off, there'd be no extra pickup. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line now. Anytime we have two holidays, all right? We pay overtime for one day, all right? And then they're off one of the two holidays, and again, there's no extra picking. Councilman Page?
This is kind of a direct question for, for you, I think, because I wasn't at the meeting when this, the, the Public Works. See, you ought to just come to the podium. Pretend like we're in the legislature and doing how we should do it, but my question, my question is, we've heard that there may be some cost savings here. Do we have a specific breakdown of how much we would be saving?
I don't have the full breakdown, but I do believe that we would save a lot in overtime.
But we don't have.
And I think, and I really truly believe we'd break, we would save a lot in tonnage.
But we don't have a specific amount.
But the amount of money we spend in overtime for Friday extra pickups and grass and snow is.
Right, with ten hour shifts, we would eliminate a lot of that now. If it's snowing like this past winter, we're gonna have overtime. We understand that.
Right.
All right, but I think if you could come up with a cost estimate on what we would save by going to four ten hour shifts, I, I have no problem with saving money, all right? I'll take the headache going to every other department coming to me like, we want ten hour shifts, all right? But we're not gonna close a department down on Friday to do ten hour shifts. We're not going to.
Like I said, and Public Works will not be closed on Friday.
No, no, and that would be a ten hour shift, right?
The office staff would still be there.
The street maintenance department would be there.
Yeah.
And I'll still do my eight hours.
And as the director, I'll be there.
Maybe, I ain't worried about you, girl. Yes, you'd still have the fourth time.
This is mainly for the working, the, the workers.
Well, that's, so that was also the follow-up question to, if, if we do do the four hour, because I know several entities in state government that are doing this that.
Yeah, Charleston does, South Charleston does it.
Well, also the state government, but who, on the, the, whatever day that it wouldn't be open, or I shouldn't say wouldn't be open, but would be the, the day that a lot of your employees would be off, who all would be manning the office? Would it just be a skeleton crew, or how many would be there?
Office wise?
Yeah, office, yeah.
There's only two of us there anyways.
There's only two there, so it would just be, so it would just be you two on that day anyway. Okay.
But the street maintenance crew would work in that.
Yeah.
We have the street maintenance crew, and even if we choose to not change the schedule, the extra trash pickup would be on Friday.
Correct, yeah.
All right, but where we're gonna save money is on the four ten hour shifts.
Correct.
But here's what I.
There's a lot of time we had to keep guys over from two to four all week. Well, because sometimes we get down to a skeleton.
You guys do a hell of a job, John Boy. Parks does a hell of a job. Fire department does a hell of a job. Police, I'll put them up against anybody. Matter of fact, a guy that used to be the executive director of the municipal league was bragging on his Public Works, and I said, mine's better. So, yes, Joe.
In the proposed four day schedule, would there be any additional pickup for large items? Or would it just be, you put your trash out on your trash day?
I think Wednesday would be the next pickup day.
So if, if your regular pickup day was Wednesday, it would just be.
You picture.
Everything.
That's what I'm saying. Before, it used to be just extra pickup for bigger, barker items. But like I said, the Fridays turn into a trash day. Every, there's probably ninety percent of people out here is putting their trash out on Friday. And they used to not be like that.
And this would probably help your street maintenance crews as well, right? They'll work longer days, not that mobilized every morning.
But, but, but John Boy, again, and to, to cancel, it differentiates. The people of St. Albans love that extra trash pickup.
For one bag or two bags?
Well, we can maybe limit, we maybe put a limit on it. I don't know. The, the, the big, the big obstacle is the schedule, more so than the four ten hour shifts. big, the big obstacle is the schedule, more so than the four ten hour shifts, for me, all right, uh, Councilman.
Farrell.
Farrell.
So if you're, um, already have a scheduled pickup day on Wednesday, and you're up today, the, does the Wednesday pickup only get one pickup a week, or how's that, how's that gonna work?
That would move everything back, Monday pickup, Tuesday pickup, Wednesday would be extra pickup, then you'd have a Thursday pickup and a Friday pickup, based on the rewards.
Okay, so Wednesday would be to Friday.
Huh? Well, now, there still will be people working Fridays, there'd be street maintenance, but there could be, there has to be trash pickup on Friday, if you make Wednesday.
That's what I'm saying, that's why we're here, we're discussing it, so, I mean, I need y'all's thoughts, I mean, that's.
I mean, there's, there gonna have to be trash, trash pickup on Fridays, if you make the extra pickup on Wednesdays.
Now Wednesday's gotta go somewhere.
Yeah, and, and if you move Wednesday to Thursday and Thursday to Friday, all right, that's A okay, and the extra pickup on Wednesday.
Well, I'm just trying to eliminate trash day on Friday, I'm trying to get it back to a, a barker item for the week.
And I understand where you're coming from, John Boy, you know, I've always been in the record.
It's costing us more.
But this extra pickup is, is so important to the citizens of St. Alvin's.
Oh, I know, I know.
They really do, please.
But if they would just help off the trash people, I mean, I know in my ward, less than forty percent of people even have a trash can, and if they had a trash can out there, they could put in three bags, versus on Friday, they put out there one bag, you know.
But that won't be, that, that solve, that won't, nothing will solve that with this though, no, because like, well, you can't do away with Friday pickup.
Councilman Farrell.
So, just an idea, um, is it possible to just do like half the town, like, uh, all your odd wards do on the first and third Friday of the month, and all your even wards on second and fourth Friday of the month, and you're only doing half the town, um?
Oh, yeah, we can do like Mondays on Thursdays, Thursdays on Mondays.
I'm talking about Friday.
Other way, you could get a. They never know what.
That's, 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 that's a good idea, but the only problem is getting everybody on sync, in sync, to know what's going on, I mean, I mean, even, like I said, when we have one day off, I get umpteen messages, when's trash pickup this week, when's trash, and I'm thinking, it's always a day behind if we have one day off, but, I don't say that, I just say, you know, Monday goes to Tuesday, Tuesday goes to Wednesday, Wednesday goes to Thursday, Thursday goes to Friday, and there's no extra pickup on Friday, getting them to understand that is gonna be very difficult, yes, Councilman Knight?
We could talk about this all day, my suggestion is, the committee, and three of us are here, and John Boy and Amy, go back to the drawing room, come back with, we know where we're gonna save, we'll come up with dollar value.
More solid plan, yeah.
And more solid planning of what we're gonna do, and the fact is, we can't really change, we don't wanna change the regular pickup, because then, nobody would know when to put their trash out, but, I know where John's coming from, but let us discuss as a committee in more depth, and come back next meeting, or next month, two weeks, two meetings, and, and present this, again, give us time to help with John Boy and get it up.
Crunch some numbers and everything like that, the, the one thing that I do have, all right, and I, I've said it a half dozen times, is that the extra pickup on Friday really differentiates and makes our citizens very happy.
We talked about that, and I don't think we at the group really knew what John was looking for and what we were looking for.
Right.
So, once we all get together, come back with a plan, and throw it out there then, and instead of beating it.
Sounds like a plan to me.
I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir, Councilman Campbell.
Do, to do the, the, the four day week, do you have to change the schedule, or can this, is that, we talking about two separate things? Can the schedule remain the same, and you still do the four, the four, the ten hour shifts?
Can you rotate the ten hour shift, or where you still have a ten hour shift on Friday?
You might not go on four.
That's the question I make, yeah.
Stand through Friday with your ten hour people.
So we, the, the schedule doesn't have to be changed.
Yeah, that would give some days, uh, some people maybe a day off on Monday, and others on Friday.
They'll have plenty more hours to get out there and get extra items off the street.
Yeah, and, 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 and to be honest with you, I had to pick the phone up and say, John, I said, John Boy or Alex, I said, so and so call me, they got this, they go get it done, you know, our guys get things done, uh.
Let's let the committee deal with it.
Yeah, I agree, I don't know if you need to be emotional on that, or not, okay, so, we're leaving this discussion as the committee will get back, crunch some numbers, show us where we're gonna save money, all right, and.
One of us will come back, probably to get in on it.
Yeah, and come up with a reasonable, acceptable schedule for the four ten hour shifts, and like I said, you could give some off on Monday, and they work a ten hour shift on Friday, you know, so be, you know, so, uh, the, the citizens do not lose what they really appreciate about your all service, and, and, uh, they appreciate a lot, I get calls all the time, I try to pass more to you all, but, uh, I know the state fire marshal stopped me up at the Capitol last Wednesday, and told me to tell you all how great of a job you did on the roads, he lives up on Island Drive, and, or off Island Drive, so, you know, there's a lot of people that really appreciate and support what y'all do, they do, so. Thanks, Councilman.
Don't worry about it, Wendy, John Boy.
All right. All right, new business, a resolution ratifying, confirming, approving, and adopting an amendment to Rule Five, the eligible list, item one, original appointment of the city of St. Alvin's Fire Civil Service Commission rules and regulations, since Mayor James, but, you want to clarify?
Yeah, we brought this last month, and it basically, it was worded incorrectly, or how it was worded was not the original intent of the Fire Civil Service Commission, so this language clears that up, hopefully, uh, state law says that test scores are good for three years, thirty six months, uh, we're gonna test every eighteen months, but, we're gonna give people the option to test once, and they keep that score for thirty six months, if they so choose, or they can elect to test again.
If they didn't have a great score.
If they didn't have a great score, uh, so that's what this does.
Makes sense to me.
Felt approved. Second.
All right, questions or discussion, all in favor say aye, opposed nay, motion carries, those suggesting ordinance issues, ordinance is first reading, an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the code of the city of St. Alvin's, West Virginia. Questions or discussion, all in favor say aye, opposed nay, motion carries, ordinance is second reading, an ordinance amending Article one oh seven of the code of the city of St. Alvin's, purchasing procedures.
This is, uh, two seconds.
Questions or discussion, all in favor say aye, opposed nay, motion carries, Finance Committee report recommendations, Councilman Rupp.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell, I'd like to request a motion for approval of payment of current invoices in the amount of twenty nine thousand, three hundred and ninety four dollars and thirteen cents.
Second. Questions or discussion, all in favor say aye, opposed nay, motion carries?
I'd like to request a motion for approval of payment to Compass Minerals in the amount of eight thousand, twenty nine dollars and six cents for salt to be used for the snow removal for the Public Works Department, to be paid from line item five six six dash three four one dash one nine, one seven.
Thank you, Senator. Questions or discussion, all in favor say aye, opposed nay, all right, letters and reports, Councilman Knight, you got anything to report?
Friday the seventh is the glow party from seventy nine of Hansford.
What was the turnout for the Valentine party, it was like a hundred seventeen kids.
It was well over a hundred, it was.
Yeah, yeah, very good.
Maybe a hundred and fourteen.
Yeah, all right, uh, any other letters and reports? Uh, no appointments, announcements, Public Works Committee, Wednesday, March fifth, at eight, eight AM at the city garage, Parks Committee, Thursday, March sixth, at six PM at the Hansford Center, Finance Committee, Monday, March tenth, at four thirty PM in the MWC conference room, and City Council, March seventeenth, at six thirty PM in the council chambers, I do want to announce that me personally, this Sunday, I'm leaving to go to DC, uh, as President of the West Virginian Municipal League, and I'll be gone through Wednesday, and then the following week, I have the legislative conference up in Charleston, so I'll be busy Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that week, but, you know, you got my phone number, you call me if you need something.
How about Jared's in charge?
I don't know, I, I haven't decided, I gotta look at the schedule, I might let Jared run his first meeting, I don't know yet, though.
Can we take a vote on that?
Yeah.
I saw him sit behind your desk.
You know it'll be a longer meeting than I run. All right, any other announcements?
Fifteenth is the pub crawl.
Oh, pub crawl, March fifteenth, that's right, up here on Old Main, crawl the green, it's now time for public forum, any resident wishing to address council may step up to the podium, give your name, your address, you got five minutes to speak your piece. All right, with no apparent public forum, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, adjournment.
All right, all in favor say aye, all right.